Good evening. Welcome to the December 10, 2025 School Committee Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting.
I make a motion to open the meeting.
A second.
All in favor? Great, thank you. We entered into this meeting at 6:00 PM for the purposes of executive session. I will take a motion from someone to enter into executive session, please. And this is for the purposes of discussing wage contract negotiations with the union personnel on Foxborough Education, Professionals and Educational Assistance. The committee will, I'm sorry, the committee will return to public session at 6:30.
I make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing wage and contract negotiations with union personnel.
Second.
All right, all in favor? We are going to do a roll call vote. We can start with you.
Pat McGuire, yes.
Nathan Erman, yes.
Sarah Ladonna, yes.
Michelle Daxton, aye.
Allison Cully, aye.
All right, all in favor, thank you very much. We will return to regular public meeting at 6:30.
Oh, great. We're back on. Okay, all in favor? We're gonna do roll call vote again?
Pat Maguire, aye.
Nathan Erman, aye.
Sarah Ladani, aye.
Michelle Thaksin, aye.
Alison Colley, aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here. We appreciate everyone's time and effort.
Sign up.
Excuse me?
They're gonna be public comment.
We've gotta open the door. We're gonna open the door to the public and see what happens.
All right. Well, I'm gonna get my phone, talk to Foxborough Cable.
You want to say?
I'm gonna run out.
You want to say?
This is backdoor.
Thank you all for being so patient. We're sorry. We're a few minutes late. Come on in. If anyone's signing up, please sign up right here, and I'll take you through it.
How you doing?
Good, thank you.
You've been on this for almost 14 years now, 14, 19?
I know.
So, what does school committee appoint?
Alyssa, did you have students with you?
I have students with me.
I have Stevie, and then Yasmeen, and then Zach, and then Phoebe. Would you guys like to say?
They never had it before, right?
Can we walk into the classroom?
I don't wanna...
You take that out of there.
No, no, you just with public. Okay.
Does anyone sign you up?
Uh, sure.
I gotta take you to the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much. Yes.
It's up to you.
Zach Tubbs.
Zach Tubbs. If you could stand up and help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. First thing on our agenda is open public comment. I do not see that anyone is signed up right now, so we are gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of minutes. We have some minutes in here, regular meeting minutes, for October 8th of 2025.
I make a motion to approve the school committee minute meeting, meeting minutes for October 8th, 2025.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right. All in favor? And that would be 5-0-0. Thank you very much for that. We have an executive session from November 3rd. We have minutes.
I make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from the executive session from November 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right. All in favor? All right, 5-0-0. Thank you again. All right, we're gonna roll right into one of our all-time favorite things, teaching and learning highlights. Foxborough High School Project Lead the Way, Dr. Alyssa Macharnik, and I believe she has some students with her. Come on up. The only thing we want to remind you, because I don't think I've seen you at school committee in a while, or ever, is just to make sure you speak into the microphone so that the people at home can hear you.
No problem.
Thanks so much for being here.
Of course.
Two familiar faces on the end.
Just fine. Take the fancy one.
Feel some fancy.
All right. Hi there. Am I speaking directly into the microphone?
Great job.
Wonderful.
You've done this before.
Maybe once. I don't know if we have the slides. I hope they will appear, but even if they don't, I've been here multiple times telling you about all of the different changes that we have been making to the curriculum since our curriculum review for science that happened in the 22-23 school year. And I came to you in early June of that year and said, "Oh, would you be happy to approve this Project Lead the Way curriculum?" And everybody was very excited, and I think I pretty much just said, "It's a project-based program for STEM," and that was as far as I was able to take it at that time, because we had limited time. But it is. It's a STEM-based curriculum for career readiness, and it's entirely project-centered. All applied assignments, it's, there's very little write-on-the-board, copy-down-the-notes. It's all, if there is, it's strictly so that you can get on to the next project, which I hope our student panel will agree is true. Okay. And we were lucky that we were able to apply for a grant that spring that was able to fund the participation fee and the training of our first teacher. And so, in that following year, in the 23-24 school year, we were able to introduce the environmental sustainability course, which is in their engineering pathway, and takes off from the place that any students who had participated in the Project Lead the Way Green Architecture Program at the middle school should be able to recognize. And it was important that we start with the engineering pathway, because one of the things that we identified during the curriculum review was a need for more physical science electives. And so, we were able to start with environmental sustainability, and then the following year, so last year, we were able to add to that what we call Introduction to Engineering Design. It's obviously an engineering course, and it's focused largely, but not exclusively, on designing projects with CAD, and, but then physically implementing them in the real world. So, they use 3D printers, or they model things by looking at the object as it exists to begin with, figure out how they need to modify it, draw up the plans for it for the better version, this kind of thing. But it's very CAD-focused. And then this year, we were able to change over from our pre-existing engineering course, which had been Engineer Your World, and add the Principles of Engineering class, which we're gonna hear more about in a moment, and also add the new, a new pathway, which is the biomedical sciences, and we started with the Principles of Biomedical Science course. And let's see. Next year, we are hoping to add medical interventions, which is also in that biomedical pathway, and also hoping to add the Capstone course. And the Capstone course is unique in that it is 100% student-driven. Students generate their own problems. Students do research on how to solve the problem. Then they figure out what they're going to need. They go out, they get their resources, they do their live, in-person research, they do their experiments, whatever they need to solve their problem. And it's able to be an interdisciplinary course where we can have students from our biomedical pathway and students from the engineering pathway in the same room, and if they choose to, working on the same project, because it's not as though either of those concepts lives in a silo separate from the other. They're very easily working together. And I think it's important that we acknowledge that the teachers for these courses have to be pretty well dedicated. In order to be qualified to teach a Project Lead the Way course, you have to complete an 80-hour training program that's 80 hours of interactive work, whether it's face-to-face or online, and then your homework each night. So, some teachers choose to do that as two full weeks during the summer. Some of them are doing it four hours at night, twice a week, for 10 hours during the school year, but it's not a trivial undertaking. And at this point, we've had three teachers who have been trained for four courses, but obviously, if we're going to add these other courses, there's going to be an even bigger ask on our teachers, and we should acknowledge their hard work. That said, those courses aren't free, but we're really lucky that we've been able to apply for and attain several competitive grants that have paid for teacher training and that pay for durable goods to help start up each of the different courses, and we also have several more in the works. So, did we find them?
I think they're still working on technical difficulties right now. Sorry.
All right. Well, then, since environmental sustainability was our first course, Stevie Strad, oh, mine, is gonna tell us all about her experience with it.
Yeah, so, the first thing that we do in that one is we start learning about foods and GMOs and all of that. And then, this year, we started a project that our teacher hadn't done, it's on, that our teacher hadn't done before. It is, like, called the Plant the Mars Challenge, and so, we get... is like called the Plant the Mars Challenge, and so we get this dirt that's like engineered to be from Mars, and we have to, um, figure out how to change it to make plants grow in it. And then, so my group did, like, we added compost and used fish tank water and put worms in the soil, and then started growing plants. Um, and it's really just like cool to see how, like, it actually works and how that is gonna impact the future, because, like, we're learning all about, like, how it's actually impacting the world and how the stuff that's in our, like, environment is impacting us, and not only that, but like how industrial farming actually works. And it's just really interesting. So, yeah.
And for your, um, Plant Mars project, you said you had to finally submit your final report today?
Yeah, today.
And so that was a group report, right?
Yeah. So we, for like eight weeks, we measured the plants altogether. It was, uh, yeah, two groups of four, 'cause our class is really small. Um, and then, so we all had, like, we were doing our two different experiments. And then, so mine, my group's was the compost, and then we all did, we were taking like videos and pictures every day while we were doing it. And then, um, we ended up, like, compiling a, making a full written report, like lab report, and then we had to make a final video presentation as well to go with it, and then finally submitted it today. So.
And now that it's gone to Ms. Borges, where is it going next?
It's, so she's gonna take it, and then she's gonna submit it to a national competition that we are in, and then we will see how we do, which I think that my plants and my group is gonna do really good, 'cause our plants grew to be, like, so tall that we had to put sticks in them to keep them upright. So, really excited.
Okay. All right. Um, let's go forward and see if we can see the video of, on the next slide, hopefully. Maybe?
Oh, video's playing.
Or we can watch this video of, uh, Zach and Fee's class. Either way, we'll come up to it in a minute, then. But, Jenna, can you tell us about your experience with Principles of Engineering?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Make sure I got my microphone. This is so fancy, so cool. Um, but yeah, it's been a neat class. I don't really wanna be an engineer, uh, to be completely honest. I took it 'cause Dr. Macharnik recommended me for it, and it was not AP Physics, so, um, and I was like, "Yeah, sure." To be truthful, to not know what to expect going into it, I was like, "Oh, we're gonna be, like, cutting apart shoeboxes and taping it together." Yeah, engineering. Um, and it's not. It's actually a lot more complex and intellectually stimulating than that. So there is a CAD piece, like the other engineering class, so we've been kinda familiarizing ourselves with CAD software and, and how to draft and design and that. Um, and then how to, one of the neat things you can do with it is you can assign it materials and see how it would interact in the real world without actually having to build it, which is really neat from a kind of R and D standpoint. Um, and good skills to have, like, again, I don't wanna be an engineer, but still something neat to do. I've always kinda liked to tinker, so that was the other reason I, uh, thought about taking this class. But, so there's that part of it, which is really neat, and then there's the actual physical building part. So we have, they call them VEX components. They're kits. They've got kinda all different parts and whatnot. So there's, uh, structural metal pieces, bolts, screws, plastic stuff, wheels, whatever, to build stuff. And then there's the electronic component of it. So you have motors and servos, which is like a motor that only turns partway before it goes the other way, um, sensors, buttons, like, all the stuff. So we can build, um, I mean, they're not the most elegant things, but we can build robots like that. And then that project, we did a, a sort of tug-of-war of different groups that build robots, and then the idea was to get higher torque via gear ratios or other, other methods so that, you know, one would beat the other, whichever one had better torque. And all the motors were the same, so it was really, uh, you know, who can engineer the best thing with the same parts. So it's, it's been a neat class, and, and I am enjoying it more than I would've thought. I've also found it more challenging than I would've thought.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, it's not a bad thing. Um, it's good.
Fee, I know that you had wanted to talk about Tech, where you told me you'd been really proud of that project.
I really enjoy, like, the tug-of-war project, because more, like, our first project, we had to make shoes, or like paper towels and stuff like that. I honestly just taped, like, just taped, like, the paper towel onto my, like, feet. I'm gonna be honest. I thought that's what's gonna be, like, the whole class, and I, I'm more like drop this class, but I stuck, I stuck with it for like, in all, like, two or three weeks, and I had a lot of fun with it, because right now, I'm a senior. Most of my other classes are kinda boring, more note-taking, and this is like one of my class where I can actually hands-on build stuff and talk to people and just, like, socialize. I feel like that's a, another generalized skill you should have, because, like, most of the time, our teacher put us in groups so we can, like, work with each other, talk with each other, and like, use each other's, like, specialties. Like, sometimes, I'm not real, the best at coding. So I helped build the machine, and my other teammates helped, like, code the machine. And, yeah.
That's awesome. All right. And, oh.
Oh, go back.
Can we go back one? Um, I just wanted to point out that, um, my pumpkin picture, I centered so amazingly well here, but was a, uh, group effort that the Intro to Engineering Design students, the Principles of Engineering students that we have here, um, and then woodworking students were all encouraged to make, uh, their own designed jack-o'-lanterns and build them, and that we had a little competition throughout the school. They were posted in the media center. Um, I know that some students prefer CAD more than others, but that it was, uh, still a skill-building opportunity. If we could go one more? Okay. If it plays, this should be where we see the dirt. I don't know if we can, yes.
And the worm.
Mm-hmm. Oh, we can't hear her, though. Stevie, can you tell us, like, what we've got here?
Yeah. So that was after eight weeks of growing the plants. You can see how, like, tall they ended up getting. Um, we grew lentils, but, um, we had put four worms in the dirt, and our original suspicion was, so, we had the, like, I think we had six plants that were, had Martian soil, and then one plant that was just potting soil as a control. The potting soil one ended up dying by the end, and then the Mars ones kept growing. So we had assumed that maybe the worms in the earth one had ate the roots of the plants, because they had nothing else in there to eat, but then it turns out that the worms in the earth ones weren't there, and then all of the worms in the Martian soil were alive still, 'cause we had also thought maybe those ones had died, and they were giving them extra nutrients. So we don't really know why it was doing this, and it was working so well, but it worked really well. And so we were really happy when we were going through the dirt at the end. So.
Okay. One more? Okay. And Yasmin's gonna tell us all about Principles of Biomedical Science now. How did you end up there?
Well, first, I was actually in the Intro to Engineering and Design one, but I felt like I was an engineering person, so I ended up switching to the same class that was happening in the same period, which also ended up being a PTLW class. So in this class, what we do is, it is more note-taking than hands-on in this class, because it's medical, so you obviously need to know terms, um, things about different, um, like, the body parts, your blood, and all that kinda stuff. So you obviously need to know those stuff, so you obviously have to take notes. So our first unit was about forensic science, and we were analyzing a dead person, which her name was Anna Garcia, which was in the back of our classroom, which was a mannequin, of course. Um, but she ended up, um, dying. We were analyzing and investigating, like, how she died. We ended up learning about how to, like, what evidence was used, um, what different careers are there, like forensic investigators, crime scene people, um, and a lot of, like, that kinda aspects. Also, we learned about, like, um, what's it called? Uh, like, the blood type. So we were, like, there were people of interest that were, like, we were testing if they were, like, the suspect. So, like, we were testing their bloods. Um, we didn't end up doing the blood test, because the supplies didn't come through, but we did end up doing the fingerprint testing, which was really cool. It was like the powder, and it was like metallic, so like, it was like, not metallic, magnetic, that's the word, magnetic. Um, it was really cool. I ended up taking my fingerprint, and we ended up finding out whose fingerprint it was. I believe it was her own fingerprint. Um, and then, and now we're also doing about clinic work, so we're doing, like, more medical things than forensics. So now we're learning more about, like, our body parts and what they're actually meant to do. And it's really cool, because, um, a few days ago, we were doing vital testing, so we were measuring our pulses, we were measuring our blood pressure, and it was really cool, because we're measuring our own, so things, we didn't know about ourselves. We knew how to do, like, measuring our pulses, where we can find our pulses. And it's an overall really, like, great class to have, because I'm, I'm not a medical person. I don't plan on being in the medical field, but this, I do like learning about my own body and, like, what it is. So this class really opens my eyes to, like, it's, like, ways we can, like, the way our body works and the way, like, how we have fever, is we're fighting infections and stuff like that, which is really cool to know.
Awesome. And I know a little something that she doesn't know, but, um, they're gonna be having, um, the opportunity to develop, uh, blueprints for a, uh, mobile medical facility later in the year. So we'll have that displayed in the media center, similar to the way the pumpkins were. Students are also working on snowflakes that they're 3D printing right now, and also to try and make sure people see, like, the utility of learning these skills. Uh, and then I was told that I was required to invite you this Friday from nine to one in the first floor media center at the high school. The Principles of Engineering students will be participating in the Student Solve, so they will be collaborating with a mentor from, I believe it is National Grid, to solve an actual problem. We haven't been told what it is, 'cause it's a competition, and there's people all over that are working on it, but, um, to generate ideas that might actually be workable for solving a problem that National Grid apparently has right now, because they think, and I do too, that these kids have some really great ideas, and they might be able to put their creative juices to work for good. So, any other questions?
No, but thank you guys so much. One thing that was common for me across the entire table was all the excitement and enjoyment you all seem to be having from this class, so I think that's great. Anyone else?
Uh, well, that National Grid part answered my question about using local companies for it. That's certainly great to hear. And I just really liked hearing about all this crossover with practical applications in the real world. Um, I, specifically, the thing about the assigned materials and the Principles of Engineering, I actually just heard that, like, that's how Nvidia became such the monster it was, because they used an emulator to simulate it instead of testing their chips. So it's really good to hear all that practical stuff applicable.
I mean, congrats to all of you. I mean, it seems like you're enjoying it, so you obviously chose the right classes, and congrats to you for sticking through it and now enjoying it. And I think it's good to hear that it's definitely a little more interesting than other classes, where you're just sitting and taking notes. And, like I said, it's very good to have a hands-on component to class, so enjoy it.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
I think it's great. I'm excited to hear that there are more, uh, classes like this coming down the line for Foxborough. That's very exciting.
For sure.
Yeah. I love that you guys added the environmental, um, sustainability part. I mean, that's amazing. I think it's always great to start learning all that stuff early, 'cause it's so, just like Stevie said, it's so important.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Do you guys have anything?
Good luck in nationals.
Yeah, good luck.
You'll let us know how your plants do.
Yeah, for sure.
We appreciate, as always, you guys all being here. I thank you for sharing, and, you know, it's what makes the stuff we do so exciting, when you guys come in and share it with us. It really makes it fun, so thank you.
Cool. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you too. Have a good night. Thank you. Fantastic. I really missed that. We're gonna, uh, roll right into superintendent update.
Great to have students.
All right. Um, so since our last meeting, we had a couple of competitions, games that were gonna be happening, so I wanna congratulate our cheerleaders. They had gone to the state competition in Worcester, so they ended up placing fifth at the state competition, so congratulations to them. We had our football game, being able to go to the Super Bowl again, which was fantastic. Um, not the outcome of the game that we had wanted, but again, being able to go, and it was, it was a great game. And then the B I T auction was after that. Um, going to that after the football game, great turnout at the auction. So really wanted to take a moment and to thank everyone that goes into putting that auction together. It is an extraordinary amount of work, um, by the crowd that was there. I, it looked like they had a great turnout, and as always, the baskets that are done by all of the classrooms are amazing. So thank you to everyone who had a hand in that, because it, it makes a difference for our schools. Um, the spotlight that in December was really focusing on our PTOs, our boosters, our PAC. If it weren't for those organizations and all of the volunteerism that takes place, we wouldn't have a lot of the field trips and enrichment activities that we have for our students. So again, really wanna thank for all of those that were behind the scenes as well as at the scene. Um, it really does make a tremendous difference for our students. Also, would like to congratulate some of our musicians. We had senior district auditions here recently, and we had twenty-two of our high school students that were selected to perform in the choir, orchestra, and concert band. So, um, it's not surprising to know how well that they did. They continue to impress every time. And out of, um, those students, we had so many, actually half of them that ended up earning, um, to be selected into the all-state recommendations. So congratulations to our musicians. And then we had the Hall of Fame on Saturday evening. It was our third annual Hall of Fame. Um, that was, uh, a great turnout as well. We had four individuals that were inducted into the Hall of Fame, as well as the nineteen ninety-five girls' basketball team. Um, Allison, I know you were there. You were a recipient, or you were actually inducted into the Hall of Fame last year, so I'm sure it was quite special for you to be there.
Yeah, it was great. Um, and the ninety-five basketball team, I played basketball growing up with a lot of them, which is, it was great to see them. I haven't seen some of them in probably since high school. Um, and then Lindsay Regan got inducted, and she was one of my teammates. She was a couple of years younger than me. We won a lot of state titles together. So it's always great going to those events, seeing former Foxborough athletes that really helped build the programs. I mean, the girls' basketball team was the first time they won the state title. So, um, it was awesome, and it was so great just to see so many familiar faces that I hadn't seen in a long time. So if you ever have an opportunity to go to one of those, definitely, definitely go. They're great. Amazing.
Uh, Joe Cusack, our athletic director, and part of his message, when he was talking about the glory days and kinda harking it back to the song, and that it, it truly does make a difference. And that's what you've heard from all of the people that were there, that those days, like, the impact it had on them then, as well as what they think back and going forward, and, and just really how it intersected in so many different ways with their lives, from what they were able to gain from either the leadership opportunities, working as a team, and just being able to, um, work really hard to be able to be at the level that they were. So that was an exciting night, uh, Saturday night as well. Upcoming events, tomorrow night, um, you can go to the high school winter concert, or next week, you can go to the Ahearn concert. So lots to do in these last, uh, couple of weeks before the break, with the reminder that it is a half-day on the twenty-third before the break. It's a longer break this year, just with the way the calendar falls. Um, and then the only other thing that I wanted to mention, which is unanticipated, which is the, um, our planned-for-success twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, which we had anticipated to be able to have that this evening. It will not, it's not on the agenda. It'll be at the first meeting in January, and that is not because we didn't have it done. It was done being packaged and being able to have it, um, ready through Teaching Learning Alliance, who's kinda putting that in published form for us. We just didn't have it ready in time from them for this evening. So that will be at the January meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being so thorough. Uh, we are gonna move on next to our school committee student representatives, Yasmin and Stevie.
All right. So today was the first day of the last week of VHS classes, so anyone who's doing the online classes, if it is a mid-year, you'll have your midterm this week. If it's, um, half-year, you'll have your final this week, and then you get a little break until the semester switches, and your classes are gonna turn into studies. So just make sure that you take your final exams. Um, there's two food drive bins right now in the high school. One of them is in the lower media center, and one of them is in the office. Um, and there are college essay help sessions all this month from the English teachers. They are every Thursday up in the English hallway. Are you saying this month, too? Yep.
Um, nine more days until break, and if you didn't order your yearbook, please order.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And that yearbook thing is really, really hard and fast, so make sure you order your seniors' yearbooks. Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna move on to the preliminary discussion of the proposed fiscal year twenty-seven budget. So, Dr. Burdoz, Ms. Sheridan, thank you.
All right. So as you are aware, that this is the first of really three meetings that have to do at the school committee meeting for the budget. We've already had the budget subcommittee, um, first meeting, but here's the timeline of what's taken place to date, and then what is going to be taking place as we move forward. So we started off in October with the meeting between the ten, for the plan purpose, and then also just looking at what dates were. We had the second meeting in November, the financial summit that you were in attendance for in the last week. We had the second meeting in November, the financial summit that you were in attendance for in the last week. The budget subcommittee has already begun meeting. They had their first meeting. And then this evening is the preliminary presentation. It's really that first pass and discussion to show where we are coming off of that financial summit and the direction from the town from that summit. And then going forward in January, we'll have two meetings. We'll have our public hearing, which we're required to have. And then we need the school committee to vote the budget at the second meeting in January, which is the 28th, which is also the public hearing. We will then be distributing the budget books to the advisory committee, meeting with them, with our liaisons. And then capital improvement requests. We'll actually have our CIP requests at the first meeting in January as well to go over those. And then the annual town meeting will take place on May 11th. So similar to the past as far as the timeline and we are right in step with that timeline. So when we talk about the budget process itself, it, it is really analyzing down to every single line item in the budget. We're looking at trends. We're looking at patterns in classes and class size. We're looking at data. For instance, looking at our special education data, looking at how our population of students maybe have shifted even within special education. You'll hear a little bit at a high level as far as that, looking at class sizes, having to make some shifts based on enrollment. We're going to talk a little bit about what the enrollment patterns look like and how that shifted across elementary to middle and high. And really getting at a very granular level. The collaboration piece, we don't do this in a vacuum. It is working with everyone from building leaders to central office to working with school committee, obviously, because it is your budget. And then having additional meetings with the finance director and the town manager on the town side and being able to share where we are, what are the challenges that we face. And it is a needs-based budget. It is going based on what our needs are, based on our students being our top priority. And that's where it all stems from. As far as the strategy, a lot of work with this budget. Karen has done a tremendous amount of looking into where can we offset with revolving accounts to be able to take some of that off the operational side. We have some changes too with the newcomer funds, as you'll hear. Those, we've been able to have those for the last couple of years. Those are ending up where they're going away. Our newcomers are no longer with us. Those funds have remained because we've been able to use those and transfer those from one year to the next, which has been very favorable to us for our operating budget in order to do what we've needed to do with enrollment changes. And then the goal is focused off our strategic plan, our plan for success. And you can see here, these are the, it's the teaser, if you will, the, the three areas which will be on the plan for success. That will come out in January. It's leading and learning. It's supporting the whole child. And it's supporting safe, inclusive and innovative schools. All of the initiatives and objectives that are in that five-year plan are also the backbone to what the budget supports. So when we look at the overall message, it, it goes along with our historical financial approach. It's a strong commitment to education. We're proposing a budget that continues to maintain an excellent education for our students and to support our students through our instructional services and through our current programs. It is one that takes the forward, the district forward to continue to be able to meet our goals in our plan for success. It's all of the initiatives that, that drive that plan in order to be where we need to be for our students. The largest percent of the budget, it is dedicated to the instructional services with 86% of the budget being salaries. And that is direct impact going to our students as it should be. At this point in time, we've settled with secretaries, food service personnel on extended day. We're still in negotiations with our professional staff and our educational assistants. That's still ongoing. This particular budget, it is addressing, as it has in the past, shifts in enrollment. So when we think about the budget at this, this is early. So we're talking about a budget for FY '27 and this is December. Just as when our budget was approved in, in January of last year, we had some shifts based on needs and with enrollment. And we are needing to be able to be agile and to attend to those needs and how it changed. So you'll see some shifts in staffing as an example in order to bring down class size. Where they're reasonable and what we expect and have maintained in Foxborough. When we look at programs, English language learners as an example, by not having the newcomers, the number of our L students, that has declined. We've seen our enrollment at the elementary level. It is, it is trending back up. We've seen that. Not surprised that we're seeing the decrease at the high school because of the last several of years. When the elementary has decreased prior, that's now hitting the high school. But now we're seeing that uptick in elementary. That's now also hitting the middle school as well. When we talked specifically about fifth and sixth grade. The mental health supports for students and identifying what those needs are, you'll see that within some of the budget scenarios. And as always, this budget is one that is for us to be able to meet the state guidelines in all aspects across public education. The plan for success, as I just mentioned, this will be fully presented in January. Those are the three areas that I just mentioned. It goes back to what our core values are for students. And that is for them to think critically, to be able to make an impact, communicate responsibly and discover their potential. And all the strategic objectives and initiatives and outcomes, we could not do that without the budget to support our programs and services to students. So this evening, we're going to be talking about three different scenarios based on what it means at each of those areas. So there's three different proposals that we're going to show what it means for each one of those. And then to be able to answer questions on that.
Okay. So with this budget presentation, the hope is to tell you a little bit of a story on how we get to this budget that we're bringing tonight and also give you enough data, enough information to make an informed decision. Because we know that the budget is quite a decision that all the town has to make. So in this presentation, we're bringing forward three proposals for the '27 budget. And we'll be reviewing the differences between the three. In the end, the superintendent, the committees of the town and ultimately the town meeting vote by the residents of Foxborough determine the direction of this year's budget. Proposal one is $44,967,943 and that is a 3.2% increase. This meets the town recommended budget increase that they had at the financial summit. Proposal number two, that is $45,168,056. That's a 3.68% increase. With proposal number one, that's the same full-time equivalencies that we had in FY '26. And proposal two, we feel this is more geared toward what we feel is a level service because we did have some enrollment increases and student services increases. Proposal number three, $45,299,18 is 3.98, 3.98% increase. On that one, there's some additional staff added. So as we go through the budget presentation, we'll get a little bit more into these three proposals. Okay? So since we have some new school committee members, I thought it was important to go over some of the school finance. So first, we're going to start with the foundation budget. So Chapter 70 is the program for ensuring adequate and equitable educational funding. The formula establishes the minimum spending requirements and that's called the foundation budget. And the minimum requirements for each municipality's share of the school's cost, and that's the local contribution. So the formula reviews your property values. They review the resident's income to determine how much of that foundation budget should be funded from local property taxes. So if you see on here, you'll see that you've got the school financial formula is the school budget equals state aid plus local funds. So each district must spend the sum of the required district contribution in addition to its Chapter 78. So this is referred to as the district's net school spending requirement. So both of them have to be met on the fiscal year to meet the net school spending requirement of, of the state. All right. When you go to the next slide. So here, we're going to determine how the state determined in Foxborough's Chapter 78. So I'm going to start with FY '26. So in FY '26, the state formula determined that the foundation budget for Foxborough was $37,172,2. Then you minus out what the required district contribution is. So that's the amount that the state feels that the district should be able to contribute to your budget. So that's the $29,764,062. You subtract the state, the foundation budget and then you subtract the required district contribution. And that determines the foundation aid with the formula. So the foundation aid for FY '26 was $7,407,940. So in essence, that's the aid that, that in this formula is determined for your state aid. However, what they do is they look at your previous Chapter 78. And if your previous Chapter 78 is higher than what this foundation aid is, then there's a clause that comes into effect and that's called the hold harmless clause. So with the hold harmless clause, you're guaranteed to get that amount of aid that you got in the previous year. And then you also get some additional minimum aid. So for Foxborough, it's considered what they call a minimum aid district. So a minimum aid district would get that amount that you got in, in the Chapter 78 the previous year. And then you would get a minimum aid per pupil. And for FY '26, that was $150 per pupil. So the $150 times the enrollment, which for FY '26 was $2,580, so you get additional minimum aid of $387,000. So the $387,000 plus the Chapter 78 from the previous year, thus will give you the minimum aid that FY, in FY '26 that was given to Foxborough. And that's $10,082,632. So you see with the minimum aid district, there's not a lot of increases each year. There's, there are other districts that would not be a minimum aid, which would get much more than that in this district. But for Foxborough, you remain as a minimum aid district. So let's, right here on this slide, what I want to indicate is, so if you're a minimum aid district within this formula, there's certain categories that are intended to reflect additional resources needed to educate students. And the examples would be students with disability, English learners and low-income students. And for Foxborough to move out of that minimum aid district, it would have to be a fairly drastic change in your population in order to get to the higher level of, of a Chapter 78. And currently, with this slide, you can see that in the, that you have Foxborough in the navy blue and you have the state in the gray. So in the high-needs population, as you can see in the blue, Foxborough is kind of staying pretty still, pretty even. And so I don't anticipate that you're going to be moving out of that minimum aid district really quickly. I'm, I'm not sure. Sometimes that will happen where you get an influx of a certain population that comes in and then you might see a drastic change in your population and then your aid will go up. I have seen that in my past, but currently it doesn't look like that's going to happen. You're pretty much going to be a minimum aid district. But your Chapter 78 is not going to, you're not having a chance that it's going to go down. You're going to, you're going to be able to stay at what you got before and then that additional per-student aid coming in. All right. On this slide here, it shows you the history of the Chapter 78 and the required net school spending and the actual net school spending. So she, you see the gold and that's your Chapter 78. So it's pretty much like flatlined. All right. And then you'll see in the light blue, that's your required net school spending. So that's going up, up, up each year. And then you'll see the navy, the dark blue. So that's your actual net school spending, which for Foxborough is also going up, up, up. All right. So let's talk a little bit about what really the net school spending requirement is. So the Commonwealth School Finance Chapter 70 establishes the annual net school spending. And that's what is required for each Massachusetts school district. So if you fail to meet that minimum state requirement, then you could result in a non-improvement, non-approval of your municipality's tax rate. And you would also get enforcement action by Attorney General. Or you could also get loss of state aid. So if you don't meet that minimum, these things could come into effect. And the other thing about, most districts spend in excess of the net school spending requirement. So if you see a district that is pretty close to their net school spending requirement, they're having a tough budget year. You see, it's good to compare yourself with other districts, especially the surrounding towns and like districts. Because you'll see that most districts are above. If you're close to that, you're not doing that well. And you also want to see, check to see how others are doing. Because you do want to be competitive with your surrounding towns. You want to also be, you know, in your educational, you're looking at your like towns, you don't want to be somebody that's way under what the others are doing. So it is important to review that. It's one of the things that you do when you're building your budget. So in here, you're going to see a little bit of some like towns and the net school spending. For the navy is the Foxborough. So in this, you can see navy is the Foxborough. So we're not the lowest. We're not the highest. We're kind of in the middle. The orange on the far right, the reason I put that in, because that's Wellesley. And what I want to say to people is, you want to compare yourself to like districts. You don't want to compare yourself to districts that, there's just no way you're going to be Wellesley. So just to give you an example is for Foxborough in FY '25, we were 36.5% over the net school spending requirement percentage of that. All right. We're kind of in the middle. You've got Sharon is at 51.3, Canton at 47.1. You've got Walpole at 35.6, Mantle at 29.6, but you've got Wellesley at 106.3. So when you're, you know, reviewing your budget and you're looking at it, it's really important to look at like districts, like towns that are similar and you're, for your town. Not only your like town, but your surrounding towns. Okay? For the next slide, here's the net school spending. So in this slide, it shows the net school spending, the history of Foxborough. All right. So at the financial summit, there was a review of the amount of money Foxborough is over in the net school spending. And it fluctuates. It goes up and down a little. So you can see in this slide that Foxborough from FY '18 to FY '23 to FY '25, you kind of went down and then you went up and then you went down and then you went up and then you went down and then you're down a little bit more. So those greens are, those are the budget, the greens are the ones that were a higher percentage than you've had in FY '24 and '25. Okay? Some of them are lower percentages, some are high. And I would guess that when you're building a budget, you're looking at the needs of the district in that year. There are other, there are various factors that will come into play when you would get a higher budget increase on one year and a lower budget increase on another year. Because when you're looking at your budget and you're reviewing everything, the most important thing in my mind is to have a needs-based budget because what we want is we want to educate children the best we can. And so you're looking at that when you're reviewing the budget. But it is really important to look at these things because you don't want to start sliding really low. All right? So you want to just make sure you have an idea of where you are in that. In this one here, this is another way that you can review your data when you're doing your budget. So this is the per-pupil expenditure. For this one, this is Foxborough versus the state. So for, in the navy is Foxborough, in the gray is the state. So if you look at this, Foxborough was above the state, above the state, above the state, kind of even with the state. But then in FY '24, we slid down a little bit. The reason that we don't have '25 and we're in fiscal year '26 right now is because the data is usually lags a year behind. So I think it's going to be really important to see this when the FY '25 data comes out and then when the FY '26 data comes out. Because, you know, I, I don't think you really want to start going under the state. But I think that, you know, you may see this rising with your FY '25 and your FY '26 budget. So again, it's an area and a data point that you want to review when you're building your budgets. And for this one, that's the per-pupil expenditure. For slide 15, for this one, here we're reviewing the history of the town appropriated budgets, the increases. And you can see there certainly is in the past when budgets, the increases, and you can see there certainly years in the past when Foxborough has received higher budget increases. You've got in FY seventeen, you had a three point nine, in FY eighteen, you had a three point four. Then it went down a little. FY twenty one, you had three point eight two, and then in FY twenty six, we had that three point five, and we were lucky enough to get that nice stabilization fund established in FY twenty six, the special stabilization fund. So here you're seeing, on those years between like the twenty one to twenty three, where your budget was a little lower, but those were the COVID years, where you had the state and the federal funds that were available for the districts, so you did have some of that funding in there. So this, again, is just a town appropriated budget. In the next couple of years, you also had the newcomers fund, all right? So a lot of these funds, we all know that the COVID funds are gone, those are gone now. We only have FY twenty seven, where we have a little bit of newcomers money, but after FY twenty seven, that money will be gone as well. Slide number sixteen. So again, at the financial summit, there was a discussion about the options of the budget, the FY twenty seven budgets. These are important, I feel it's important to review the difference between the three different options that are on the table, and what we had at the financial summit, we had a level service budget. So in a level service budget, it keeps the same level of teaching and learning services for the students. So it absorbs the fixed cost increases, but maintains its existing student experiences and resources. So with the level service budget, this allows for the financial budget to increase from the previous year in order to maintain all the programs that you had previously. So that would, so say you had increases in your software, just like in your home, you have increases in your utilities or such, the level service budget allows you to go above the percentage that you had the previous year. The level funded budget does not. The level funded budget, the budget remains the same dollar amount as you had the previous budget, and the reason level funding never really adequately, it never really is adequate to the level service, because you have contractual obligations, you have your unions, you have your transportation mandated special education services. You also sometimes could have surging costs with utilities, with contracts, with supplies, with software, district, added district tuition, just like your own home, people see increases in your food, you're increases in that. So staying at a level funded budget is real tough, to keep the level service for your staff. The third one is a percentage increase limit. So with the percentage increase limit, the increase for the fiscal year is set at a certain percentage that they would like to keep you at. So for example, it may say, we only want you to be at three percent increase over the previous year's budget. All right? So in seventeen, what we decided, well, we were gonna come through with the three budget proposals, as we indicated in the very beginning of this slide. So in proposal one, we have the three point two two percent increase. So proposal number one has the same full-time equivalencies as we did in fiscal year twenty six. It's within the percentage increase recommended by the downtown. When we were at the financial summit, it was indicated that they would like to keep you at level service, but try to come in between the three, the three point two five. So this first one is within that percentage, we're at the three point two two. It is at the level full-time equivalency, but we don't feel that it really exactly meets the level service because of some factors that come into place. That was, is where we go to proposal number two. So proposal number two comes into three point six eight percent. So this option is, so during FY twenty six, we did have some increases in enrollment and some student needs, so in FY twenty six, we did have to add some positions in to the budget in order to meet that, to keep your district at the same number of students in the classrooms, to be able to give, there was some special education needs. So for FY twenty six, those added positions, in order to keep those positions, we'd have to be at proposal number two. All right? So at proposal number two, that adds four point five full-time equivalency positions, and that is one teacher and three, three point five EAs. Proposal number three comes in at three point nine eight percent. So this option allows a district a little bit of a growth. We did have a list of new staff requests, that most of them were not able to get into the budget with these three proposals. For proposal number three, the priority for adding staff was just two guidance counselors, so that is what is in proposal number three. So with these three preliminary budget proposals, what we'd like to do is, hopefully by the end of the slideshow, you have enough data, you have enough information to determine the direction that the district needs to go on what you want to go forward with your budget. If you move, eighteen, slide number eighteen. So with slide number eighteen, this is the full-time equivalencies from FY twenty six to FY twenty seven. So you will see some changes in that, and Dr. Barrows is going to talk a little bit more about that, but in every, any district I've ever been in, sometimes the needs shift, just like priorities shift, and so you will see some changes in the full-time equivalencies in certain locations, example, in the Borough and the Taylor, because the needs shift. And so I'm gonna turn this over to Amy to talk a little bit more about the full-time equivalencies for this.
So this is getting really at the micro level here, when we look at positions that have shifted. So if you think about the time that the budget is approved, which is January, so that, a lot happens between now and last January, shifts in enrollment, shift in needs. So we've had some shifts based on looking at, when we look at classroom size, we look at specifics across the district, so you might have FTEs within buildings, but we also look at other funds that we have, like the newcomer funds has really been a saving grace for us when we look at positions. So these are showing the FTE changes of what have taken place, based on really getting at enrollment, looking at trends, looking at patterns, but also it's accounting for cuts that we've made in the past. So from FY twenty five to FY twenty six, we cut a reading teacher at the middle school, we cut the library EA, as an example, at the middle school. When we look at the high school, we have made, because we've got differences in enrollment and the declining enrollment at the high school, and adjusting for that, we've gone down a point six social studies teacher, point six world language, an English teacher, we will be aligning with the same of those adjustments, and then, like as an example, the English teacher. We had an English teacher that had resigned at the high school based on the enrollment. Instead of filling that English position, we had that need at another school. We had increased enrollment at the elementary level, we increased class kindergarten, as an example, and then restored previous positions that, when we had higher enrollments previously. The same will happen in math, we'll be looking to reduce another position at the high school, which is math, which will be in line with what we've done with enrollment, with the English, with world language, and social studies. We also reduced the media center EA, as well as one of the secretaries at the high school and the number of days. So at the very granular level, looking at that, that is a proposal one, at that three point two two percent, is what was FTE to FTE equivalent, but that's not currently what we have in place right now, status quo, if you will, because we did restore some of those positions at the elementary level, and we were able to do that by offsetting the cost of our English language learner teachers into the newcomer grants, as well as some shifts with other positions district-wide, in order to bring our class size at the elementary to be equitable across the three buildings. When we look at this next one here, for proposal number two, that is at the three point six, I don't, three point six eight percent, that is currently the positions and the people, if you will, of what we have in place right now. It is providing class sizes at the elementary level that are not at twenty seven. Instead, when we look at our enrollment at the elementary across the Borough, Igo, and Taylor schools, our average class size is approximately eighteen students in a class. That is historically what our goal is, is to be able to have class sizes that are reasonable, and to be able to do what we do in classrooms and what the teachers do every day. We know education has changed. It has changed tremendously in the last five years, certainly in the last ten. To be able to have class sizes that are there, that is something that Foxborough values, and it makes a tremendous difference in our classrooms. You can see from that line there, over the last number of years, where we had the decline, but you can see that it's gone back up, and the projection is that it's gonna continue to stay steady there with the numbers that we have. So in order to have equity, to have the class sizes, sometimes it's difficult. The beautiful thing about three neighborhood schools is having three community neighborhood schools, but at times, based on that, it doesn't work out perfectly, so you might have a class that might have seventeen students in it, and you might have one that has twenty two. What we're trying not to have is like what we have had in some years, where you have twenty six kids in a kindergarten class. That is not what, what we strive for in Foxborough, and it's also not what's best for students. So in order to maintain those class sizes, would be at that proposal number two, to have the elementary with the number of classrooms that we have today projected going forward. With that said, looking at that projection starting to go up with enrollment at the elementary level, when we look to the middle school, actually, let's say the elementary here for a second, when we look at special education, our percent of special education students, we look at what's happening between the three elementary schools as well. You can see the large gain there, particularly between the Borough and Igo, and the percent of, the number of special education students. Well, also, when we go into, again, at a micro level with this data, we're looking at the students themselves and the needs, we're looking at our in-district programs, and our goal is to keep students in district instead of having them out of district. One, it's more costly, but most importantly, if we can have students in district, that's, that's the best that we can do for the student, to be able to have programs that are here. But it requires us to look at our programs and to look at our supports differently, particularly with the needs changing of students. So when we look at enrollment overall, it might look like it's steady, even though it's increased at the elementary, but we're looking specifically at the number of students that have moved out, as compared to the number of students that moved in, and it's not the same. When we look at the number of students that have moved in, as an example, that are coming to us, that are requiring specialized programs, that, the IEPs that come with them from another district, or they're just coming in even with partial inclusion or full inclusion programs. We're seeing the students that are moving out are not necessarily equal to the students that are moving in, based on need. The enrollment trends at the middle school, it is starting to creep back up from the elementary that has moved to the middle school. Grades five and grade six are class sizes right now, we're at twenty three, twenty four, might be twenty five at places, depending on the class, because it's the average that's there. When we think about right now, we have ten fourth-grade classes. We currently have eight fifth-grade classes. Now, again, as I mentioned before, it's trickier when you have three separate elementary schools, and so you might have the variability between classes, just because of the nature of bubbles in different grade levels, but at the same time, if we have ten of our fourth grade classes going into eight fifth-grade classes, projecting right now, those classes are higher currently in fifth and sixth grade, at twenty four in a class, and that's what we're seeing with that projection going forward as well. So we're looking and watching that very closely, because those classes being at the higher level, it's more difficult, not just from space in a classroom with students and our instructional model, and working with students in groups, and moving around a classroom, but at the same time, and being able to meet all of the needs of students, and knowing that the needs of students have continued to increase, not just academically, but also socially emotionally, and from mental health supports as well. So those trends that are at the elementary that are moving up, we see that at the middle school as well. Grade seven and eight is a little bit different, because you essentially have ten teachers, because of the house and being more departmentalized, if you will. And then at the high school, you can see the enrollment that has decreased over the last number of years, so when that decrease was at elementary and middle, those, those students are now hitting the high school level, and that's why, in the last two years, we have made the reductions at the high school, when we look at world language, social studies, English, and now we'll be looking at math, as well as district-wide, we will be also reducing one of our English language learner teachers based on enrollment of our L students. So it's looking at every data point within special education, within English language learners, within our classroom enrollment, and what that looks like going forward, to be able to provide the same high level of services and programs that Foxborough expects and that we've been able to deliver to our students. What is not in those proposals are other identified needs that we weren't even able to absorb within proposal two or three that's there, that are still needs. The elementary STEM position is something you heard last year, to be able to have that position in place, we're prioritizing our needs based on principals, working with them, and what are the highest priorities. Grade five, you will see there, it's not just two grade five teachers, though, it's another, if we were to add two grade five teachers, you're then also increasing the current specialist positions that are point six FTEs, they would have to increase, so you don't have almost another FTE increase, because of, when we reduced grade five and grade six, when the enrollment declined, we also reduced those full-time equivalency positions from a one point oh to a point six. Special education and preschool teacher, our preschool is booming, we continue to have the numbers increase, that is a very difficult planning for, because you don't know if you're gonna have the increase of students in the fall, in the winter, in the spring, but it's when they become eligible within our integrated preschool program, and having our tuition, but it's only the tuition for those students that are not eligible based on an IEP, an early intervention. An alternative ed teacher at the high school, this is a need, again, you heard last year. So when we think about students that they really need a different type of setting to be able to complete and to graduate, and not, or in jeopardy of maybe dropping out, there have been other programs, Mansfield is an example, we've had that in the past, they're no longer having their program. So if we have a student that is not able to meet all of their credits at the high school level, and we're trying to find other opportunities for them to be able to meet their credits, and to be able to graduate, and have a little bit of a different program for them, we've been able to have other opportunities to help meet those needs. We still have that as a need, but we're prioritizing based on what are the absolutes when it comes to class sizes and supports within the confines of this budget. And then the facilities administrative assistant, point five position, this is for our facilities department, as you know, they also work with the town, as well as with the schools, and it's to have administrative support for the areas of facilities. But again, those were all things that we were not able to absorb within those proposals of the budget, because of really prioritizing class size, enrollment, and restoring positions that are impacted by enrollment, that we had had previously, as we're seeing that uptick of students at the elementary level, and moving towards the middle school.
Okay, on this next slide, so this is, all this data is with proposal number one, but it's just to give you an idea. So the Department of Education, they have various function codes in which they separate your budget. So if you see in the yellow, you've got the sections that have the most direct correlation with students, the ones in yellow, which is the instruction area and pupil services, so instruction would be your instructional staff, your professional development, instructional materials, you've got your guidance and psychological services, everything that's really needed to directly instruct your children, your teachers, all that. The pupil services, this is also direct correlation with students, and this, you have your parent liaison, you have your nursing, your transportation, your food service, your athletics, student activity, and school security. So those two areas are most, direct correlation with students, and in this FY twenty seven budget, they are the only areas that were increased, the percentage increased. Every other area is going Every other area is going down from the previous year. So just to give you an idea of how difficult this budget is, those are the only two areas that have been able to increase. A little bit about this, if, go back for one more second on that one. I just wanted to give you a little bit. So with the expenditures, the expenditures are under in total than they were in the year before, and that's why we did some tweaking on some. There were some expenditures that were increased, and then there's some that we had to decrease. But just to give you a little bit of an idea, in the district leadership area, we had some legal fees and some district-wide software that increased. In instructional area, 97% of that increase in that area is staff contractual obligations. That's the COLA, the steps, the lanes. In the pupil services, we had some special education out of district transportation go up, the homeless transportation increased. We added an additional driver, as you all know, we got that minibus the town gave us, which was wonderful, much needed. And some of the athletic contracted services went up. There were really not much control on a lot of that area. And the operation and maintenance of plants, the only thing that increased there is we had some trash and recycling contract that was changed, and that went up in that area. We had the COLAs for the staff. The benefits and fixed charges area, that really only includes the estimate for the retirement, the sick leave buyback that the retirees get. It also has student insurance and crossing guards. And then finally, the programs with other school districts, which has your out-of-district students, and that went up about 3.16%. But again, only the two direct correlation with students were the ones that went up over the previous year with the percentage. In 26, the next slide here, you can just see that chart where that red is the piece of the pie, the red and the green are the piece of the pie. So you can see what a large chunk of that pie that those two areas do take up with this budget. On 27, so with many of the budgets that I've done through the years, there's always drivers that drive your budget, and you talk about the drivers that drive your budget. For this year, the driver is your payroll, is your staff. So for this one, 86% of the budget is payroll. Difficult to remain at a low percentage increase when 86% of your budget is payroll. The other thing about that is the budget challenge is that the salaries continue to take up a larger piece of the pie. So in 25, you had, it took up 84% of your budget, in 26, 85% of your budget, and now in 27, 86% of the budget. A large percentage of the union employees are on the top step of the salary chart, and this is great for the district for continuity and for really valued experience with the teachers, but it does come with a cost because the higher you get up the scale, the more it's going to cost for the district. But, I mean, I think it's wonderful, wonderful, wonderful that this district had that because I've been in districts where you've got that coming and going window and the revolving door, and you don't have that. But it does come with a higher cost for the district. The Unit 8 Teachers Union represents 65% of the total staff, and 66% of those teachers are at the top step. So that's just to give you an idea, the EAs represent about 14%. So really, the large percentage of this staff is taken up with the EAs and the teachers, again, direct correlation with your students. In 27, I'm sorry, on slide 28, so with the budget, when you're looking at your budget, you really want to evaluate all your funding sources. So it takes more than just that operating budget to fund the school budget. So you've got your local contribution, you've got your revolving funds, you've got your emergency funds, which that we talked about before, that was the S of funds and the newcomers' funds, which are going out of there, all right? Very little newcomers' money left. You've got your circuit breaker, you've got your CIP, which we'll be talking about in January at one of the school committee meetings. You have your grants, you have your chapter 78, and lucky enough for this district, you have that special education stabilization fund. So it's important to review these and check those every year when you're building your budget. One of those, the circuit breaker, the circuit breaker is this state program that provides additional funds to districts to offset the cost of delivering high-cost special education services to students. So here, you can just see your circuit breaker through the years. So you can see that it will fluctuate. It fluctuates depending on the out-of-district students that you have, the costs that you have for special education, but it also can fluctuate on the percentage. So with the circuit breaker, you have to meet a threshold, and then after that threshold, the state would give you up to 75% reimbursement. But some years, and that's with the special education expenditures, but also they added transportation a few years back. So you will see some of that fluctuation being that you do not always get that full 75% in transportation because the way that the state handles it is they have to fully fund the expenditures and the tuition at that full 75%, but before they will hit the transportation. So there's some years you might only get like 62% on transportation, you might get a full 75%. So some of that, of that ups and downs there is not just your out-of-district, but also some of that percentage increases as well, that you didn't necessarily get all your transportation on that year. On the budget, the outside resources, again, we talked about the revolving fund, the grants, the circuit breaker. So in FY27, we did increase the revolving fund offsets, $33,610. So again, we're trying to really utilize the resources that we have available in that. In that one, we did add about $30,000 budget offset to the building rentals because as we looked at that, we felt like that could take a little bit of the offset to help us with the building maintenance and repair and supplies. The athletic revolving, I only tweaked that a little bit, about $10,000, because we saw such a large increase in contracted service for athletics that, we tweaked that a little bit with the athletic fund. The grants, when you're building a budget for grants, you have to go on assumptions that the grant funding that you got this year is going to be the similar grant funding you're going to get next year. So with that, the increase that anticipated with that is about $137,672. The circuit breaker that was applied to this budget, so your district has a history of funding the circuit breaker at the one full year that you're receiving in this fiscal year. So circuit breaker allows you two years to spend that money that you get in. So wonderful way to budget, which this district has been doing through the years, is the year that you get that money in, so for FY26, that's the amount that you hope to budget in the next year. So for FY26, we did go a little bit over that. It was, again, another tough budget year. On FY27, trying to implement a little bit over what we got in, but trying not to really cut into your circuit breaker because then if you do that, then, you know, the special education sometimes can have those unexpected costs that are going to come in, and they're mandated, and there's not much you can do about it, so you don't really want to keep hitting your circuit breaker. The special education stabilization fund, so last year, we got $950,000. There's a little bit of typo there, we didn't get $9,500,000, $950,000. So this year, in FY25, we were able to prepay some out-of-district tuition, which has been your history in your district, that if you're able to, you're going to prepay some of your tuition to help you with your next year's budget. So we were able to do that. So because of the fact that we were able to do some prepaying, so we allocated $500,000 of the special education stabilization fund against the FY27 budget. With the special education stabilization fund, so the way that works on the stabilization fund is that the school committee is the one that will vote the money into the stabilization fund, but the selectmen and the school committee jointly have to make a decision on when we do expend that money. So not on the budget, but if we, in 27 and in 26, when we go to use some of that money, then that will require a vote by both the town and the school committee. So just so you know a little bit on that. Again, we ended with that, the three budget proposals that we have on the table. Certainly, some decisions that the town is going to have to make, and so we're hoping that with the PowerPoint that we brought tonight that gives you a little bit of data to help you to make an informed decision on this and try to keep with a budget that is sustainable for the town going forward. So that's why we decided to go with three different options on the table. So again, we got the first option, which is at 3.22%. The second one would be at the 3.68%, which would allow us to keep the staff that we had added in with the enrollment and the student needs that we had this year. And then the last one, proposal number three, that would allow us to add an additional two guidance counselors for that 3.98%.
And those guidance counselors, I didn't, I just realized I didn't speak specifically to that. That is, that is a guidance counselor at the middle school, and then it's one that would be split between the Taylor and the Igo. So when we think about the increase in therapeutic programs that we've had, for example, at the Taylor, based on the therapeutic program that we have there, that program, we had to split in two to be, to have two special education teachers, but what that's allowed us to do is to be able to keep students in district, where we've had move-ins that have come, we've had, it's like, we hear the same thing each year, the number of move-ins that we've had. The number of move-ins that we've had here, not only to my earlier point of those that have moved out versus students that have moved in, if you see, like, maybe there's a difference district-wide of 10 students. It's not the same because of the number of students coming in and specialized programs. So as an example, where we've split the program at the Taylor in order to retain students in district, which, again, is best for students, and then it's also more cost-effective for the district, whenever you have our specialized programs, that's also an increase on your mental health supports that you have in a district. So when we think about guidance counselors, the increase of number of students that we've had, like, as an example, the number of students with autism at the elementary level has increased in all three schools. So we're looking at the students themselves and what their needs are, the number of students requiring the specialized programs that we have. That also has other supports that are needed, the guidance counselors being one of those mental health supports, to be able to work with our teachers, with our students, with our related service providers in order to meet the needs of the students that we have in front of us. So the guidance counselors, those are a tremendous need at the middle school, and then also between the Igo and Taylor. Could we use a full one at Taylor and another full one at Igo? In a perfect world, yes. But we're really trying to be strategic in what are the needs and to be able to say if we could even have a .5 at Taylor and a .5 at Igo, and then the additional one, that you would then have one for each of the grade levels at the middle school. So that's the additional piece there in proposal three.
Finally, we open up for any questions that anybody has.
Stunned. It's a lot. Thank you for all your work and effort, and thank you to the Budget Subcommittee, who I know has already come to the table. Does anyone have any direct questions?
You mentioned an increase in the homeless transportation for it. Was that in part related to the newcomers, so could that?
No.
It wasn't?
No.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it did not entail the newcomers' students.
When our newcomers moved, they went to a permanent residence, so wherever district they went to, they weren't considered homeless, they went to a new district.
Yeah, I just meant like, yeah, okay, so I thought.
All right. Yeah. I knew where you were going with that question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I do have a question that I wrote down. What does the, you talked a lot about class size, obviously, Foxborough, we want to keep our classes as small as possible. In the first budget option, are we looking at increased class sizes across the board with option number one? Because you had said option number two can possibly sustain the class sizes that we have right now. So will we be looking at a fairly significant increase?
So as an example, right now, so you're looking at, so between proposal one and proposal two, so that's a teacher and three and a half EAs. What teacher and where, because this is a point in time. So it doesn't mean it's at one particular school because you would move, we would look at class sizes. But if you just look at right now at our elementary across the three schools, the average is approximately 18. If you take a second grade class, and I'm just using it as an example, and if you have three classes versus having two, if you have class size of 18, then if you had to go down to two classes, then you're looking at class sizes of 26 or potentially 27. We would have to, if we were at proposal two, and so then you were down a teacher and the EAs, where those would fall out, it depends on, again, this is December, of how things, with a bottom-based budget, that can shift and change, just as our needs clearly have. We would look at where our numbers are, but we see it's not just one particular grade level where students have moved in. When you look, you see them moving into kindergarten, and like, we go to the level of where were our students in kindergarten in the end of June, and so now those are first graders, looking at those first, that kindergarten class, they increased in first grade. Our first graders, when they went to second grade, and if we look at those second grade numbers, they've increased. So we would, if you did not have the number of teachers and classes that we have right now, you would end up having class sizes that would be higher. You wouldn't be at 18, you'd be more like at 26, depending on where that would shake out.
That's a big shift.
I do have one other comment, too. The other thing about this budget, I just want to make sure it comes across, is the expenditures, with the area of payroll versus expenditures, the expenditures are less this year. So there's not a lot of room for tweaking here. So if we were going to have to tweak below any of these, I would have hard-pressed time be able to take away more of the expenditures because we've already done some of that to try to get to these percentages here. So I just don't think there's a lot of room in cutting on expenditure side. So that's why we went with the three options here, but then you'd be cutting into staff if you needed to go below any, especially the 3.22. I don't think there's a lot of room in cutting expenditures there.
Obviously. We, yeah, that's why I asked the question about class sizes, and we know, and by the way, great job, you cut expenditures. I mean, they are a small piece of the pie, as you showed, but, you know, great work on this budget, and I can tell and feel, I wasn't in Budget Subcommittee, but I'm sure Nate and Michelle could speak to it, but I could feel and tell like how much you are really looking at every single line and every single place we can, we can be responsible with the budget. So I appreciate that because, obviously, we want to, you know, we've talked a lot about, like, fair looks all things, it's fair to the students, fair to the constituents, the people who live in the town, the taxpayers. Like, we, you've been very mindful, in my opinion, of everyone, but at the end of the day, the five of us sit here for the students. So we want to make sure we present something that's going to be, you know, ultimately fair to the learners.
Right. And I think overall, we're looking at those trends, like, we see the elementary numbers.
Yeah.
They've started to shift back up, and that's hitting the middle school, where we see it in grades five and six. But on the opposite side of that, and that's why we've made the adjustments at the high school level with those reductions, but it's a matter of restoring some of the positions that we had at the elementary that we had previously.
Your point, I'm sorry, if anyone wants to cut in, please tell me to shut up. But your point about the mental health supports and what we need, going back to us really looking at the budget, and we've been very mindful, and it's been mentioned multiple times, of keeping students in district, which is best for the students, but it also is cost-effective, you know, for the district. So those mental health supports to help us continue on our mission to keep students in district seem essential. I don't know if anyone else has any comments?
On that note also, because Cory does a wonderful job with special education, and in some of those budget years where you're seeing a little bit down, some of that were a little correlation with your bringing some kids in and having the programs within your school. So I think that is important to note that, because I was looking at some of your budget history, which had gone a little bit like that, trying to see a little bit of the areas of why.
of why. And so you built some in-house programs, and sometimes that could, you know, lower your cost with the in-house programs. So that's some of that when you were going up and down. So kudos to Cory.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to just point out, like, I'm amazed, like, with this whole team, what you've done, like, that presentation, based on what I saw coming, is very impressive. And I appreciate your hard work on, everybody's hard work on this. And I know, like, at the end, it looks like a happy story, but I can't help but just point out that I am walking away not like with a happy, like, warm, fuzzy feeling about this, only because we must remember, even though that we are sticking to this, we still do not have everything that we require, that there's, I understand you prioritize, but it's still kind of sad that there are some things that will not happen with that budget. And even as, like, proposal two going over budget or proposal three, that's still not meeting 100% of our needs. No, and I do appreciate how you have prioritized everything, and I do have faith that you've prioritized everything correctly. It's just, I can't help but lament on the fact that it's still not quite exactly everything we need. But again, I really do appreciate what you've done. I'm quite impressed with the final numbers, and I do really appreciate it. Thank you. Poor Karen must have been just, what is this, like, 24/7 that you've been doing this for the last month?
Lot, lot of grinding on my teeth.
No, I mean, I can tell. It is, it is a lot of work, and I do appreciate it. It's, I just wish it was a little bit happier ending on this, but it's, it's still very good. I'm very pleased with this. Thank you.
My question, well, first off, thank you to the whole team. Obviously, I had my first Budget Subcommittee meeting, so I see the extensive hours of work behind the scenes that goes into this, so thank you to everyone involved. The Slide 24 about the staff request that we weren't unable to absorb, do we know just a ballpark, like, what percent, if we tried to absorb all of those, we would be at? Just to show that we're, you know, trying to be mindful of the town's request, and we're trying to keep it as close to that percent as we can?
I don't have that, but I can tell you, at the beginning of this budget, we probably had 7%. And then we whittled it on and whittled it down and whittled it down to the percentage that we're at here.
Well, the thing is, you pointed out when you showed this, that even though this was the request, this is not all that is needed. You still need more specialists. So even if by looking at that final number, that would not be the final number that was needed, so, yeah.
You can think about it this way, if an additional $200,000 is about .5%, an additional $400,000 is probably an additional 1% at minimum, because there's also that additional fractional FTE. So it's about an additional 1% at least.
We also were trying to be very mindful of the town and sustainability with the budget. So in bringing forth the three proposals that we did, I mean, it was a lot of work with, you know, all of us trying to get to that point that we felt was budgets that were sustainable for the town.
I appreciate the very granular, very specific view. I do feel the amount of work and intention and mindfulness that went into this, for sure. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not easy. It's a lot about balance within everything, including we have to, one, we have to have strong schools, and a lot of that staffing is part of it, but also we have to be mindful for the taxpayers, because it's not like we're a company and we can start generating more revenue. The only way to generate more revenue is to raise taxes, and nobody wants to do that. I, one of the things that really struck me while I was looking at the proposals was sort of the delicacy of the guidance counselors, because the guidance counselors at the high school obviously have a very important role, and it's very different from the guidance counselors at the Ahearn, but as we've seen over the last few months, the guidance counselors at the Ahearn are a key piece, especially with the support in the students' social, emotional, and all that, all that component of it. I do think that the middle school, it's just, those years are so important for the kids in terms of their development on the emotional side of things with the, so I do want to lean toward, like, I do like the idea of trying to add a guidance counselor on there, but I certainly understand the difficulty for it with the staff and requests. So I don't envy you guys for the balance that you have to do with everything, so.
All right. Anyone have any other questions or comments? Let me make sure everybody has an opportunity.
We get the next Budget Subcommittee meeting to be able to have any direction, recommendations there, any other data that you need, questions to be able to answer based on this preliminary presentation, and then where we go between now and the next meeting, whatever is needed from the committee, to let us know.
Okay. Thank you. I think Nate's, Nate's point about the staff that were, requests that we're unable to absorb was poignant, for sure. And I think Pat definitely echoed, and Michelle, that the need for the guidance at all levels. Important stuff. There's nothing here that isn't important, and that's why it makes the work so hard. That's pretty much sums it up. So we appreciate the priority you have placed on students with this budget. Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? Any closing comments from Karen?
I'll just thank you to Karen and all the work that she's put into it.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. All right, with that being said, we're going to move on, on the agenda, to the exceptions of donations. I just wanted to, I don't know if you wanted to say anything. I know the Iorio family has been very, very kind and generous in the home, so I don't know if you want to say anything.
So we have the one donation tonight from the Iorio Charitable Foundation, $7,000 they're donating, and it is for general support to the Franklin High School. So again, $7,000.
Foxborough High School. She lives in Franklin, so it's in her head.
We had to correct you, though.
But we know what you mean.
I got up really early today.
She lives in Franklin, so that's in her head.
We know your brain is full of numbers, Karen. It's okay, but we want to make the correction. Foxborough really truly appreciates the Iorio family.
So $7,000 for Foxborough.
Yes, yes.
Although I'm sure Franklin could really use it as well.
We could really use, we'll take it. We'll take it. Thank you. Anyone have a motion?
I make a motion to accept with great gratitude the donation from the Iorio Charitable Fund in the amount of $7,000 for the Foxborough High School.
Second.
All right. Any further questions, comments, or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
That would be 5-0-0, except with much gratitude, this generous, generous donation from a wonderful family. Thank you. All right, we're going to move right along to the community update. We'll start with Allison on the end. Anything for us?
No, I mean, I intended charting the course on Saturday. That was a great experience to go to, and it was nice following up with this meeting because they did cover budgets in a large section of the, of the day. So it was great. I learned a lot of, a lot of good stuff, so I was happy I was able to attend that day. And it was nice to hear some things of what other towns are doing. And again, I, you know, I said this after going to the school committee conference, you know, we are doing amazing things in Foxborough and listening to some of the things that happened in other towns. I was very grateful to be on this school committee.
That's nice. If you leave with gratitude from charting the course, that's a good thing.
Yep, so it was great.
That's great. I was going to ask you how you felt the, going to the MASC conference before charting the course, did you feel like you kind of had a little bit of an edge?
Yeah, so it was nice because there were some of the stuff that were, you know, repetitive, yeah, so it was nice having gone for that. But, you know, this did dive in a lot deeper and, you know, some of the topics, so it was great to go to both.
Great. Thank you very much. Michelle?
The Foxborough CPAC is doing a social tomorrow evening at 5:00 at the Cannon Forest Rec Center. It's parents and children. We were hoping to do a craft for the parents, but we did not get enough sign-ups for that. But please come and join us. We're just a mingling of people and families.
Nice. Fun. Awesome. Thank you. 'Tis the season. Nate?
Of course, I have an update. The Foxborough Rec Department is hosting their gingerbread brunch at the Foxborough Community Center this Saturday from 10 to 12. There'll be a festive brunch buffet, and you can decorate gingerbread cookies.
And how do you sign up?
On the website.
On the website. Thank you. I'm very interested. Pat?
My family got to go to the Ahearn production of Into the Woods a few weeks ago, and it was great, the Ahearn drama program does a great job with, wait, that was the high school, it was the high school program, it was not the Ahearn.
They're all amazing.
But they also did great. And then there was...
It's okay, we can come back to you if you want. Happens to me all the time. I'm in a room all the time and I have no idea why I'm there. Dr. Burtis?
Just wishing everyone a wonderful holiday season, and for those that are traveling, safe travels, and to, you know, enjoy the time with family and friends, and happy holidays.
Yes, and thank you to the calendar. We touched on it earlier, we do have a nice, extra-long vacation, so thank you for that. Hopefully, people enjoy. Okay, Pat, back to you.
The Holiday Fair, run by the PTO for the kids, I guess it's not really the Holiday Fair, but it's a nice little shopping thing that the kids get to do, where they fill out some things, where they have little, little presents that they can pick out for their families.
Holiday shop, yes. A holiday shop at the elementary schools.
Yeah, allows the kids to shop and pick out on their own for their parents without having to go with anyone else. And it also teaches budgeting.
Good, good point.
Sounds like a great experience.
That's a great point. Dr. Burrows?
I don't have anything, just happy holidays. I hope everyone enjoys their winter break.
Me too, just happy holidays and...
Great.
Great holidays.
I'm right with you. I hope everyone has a great holiday. I hope everybody stays like really happy, really healthy, and gets really, that big long break gets them so excited to come back to school on January 6th, and I can't wait to see everybody in the new year, 2026. It's going to be great. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
All in favor? Good night, everybody.